I ask our city clerk, please call the row.
Commissioner Bob Glenn.
Here.
Commissioner Debbie Nunley.
Here.
Mayor Ron Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeff Sanford.
Here.
Commissioner Pam Smith-Wright.
Here.
All present. First item commissioners on to our agenda is the downtown, I don't know if it's an introduction of the downtown TIF or just the downtown TIF development plan. Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing for the downtown TIF which is required under the applicable rules. And I wanted to give just a basic overview of the TIF. We've talked about it several times. We've been through the process with the 54 TIF and I think everybody's fairly educated as to how one works. I did include here, just for those that may be watching that haven't seen this before, the key is really the 80 percent in red. The biggest piece of that being the state's recovery of funds to come back to the origin of where those funds were spent and that is here in Owensboro where they can be spent on local public improvement. As you can see, the 3 percent that there is in each side of that graph represents generally the growth that would be expected without the TIF. The 20 percent is growth that would come from these projects that are new and incremental growth within the TIF development area that would be retained by the city and the state to grow its general fund and the 80 percent is what becomes available as revenue and funds for reimbursement of various projects. We proposed the riverfront revitalization development area to be about 324 acres, north side of that being the river. That goes all the way from JR Miller and the bridge all the way down to English Park. It's approximately 1.25 miles of riverfront. Then to the east is JR Miller and the bridge and to the south, Haney Lane, basically the second street, Fraser to Fifth and Locust to Ninth. And this area does meet the criteria for eligibility for a mixed use TIF. You'll notice that we did recommend excluding the Texas Gas Block. It's relatively new. It's got a high occupancy and occupational tax rate, but it's not owned by the tenant. It's a tenant in there. And we wanted to make sure that based on all those things, if something was to happen to that, that we wouldn't have to make up that occupational tax to then get to the revenue that we were hoping to pay for the public infrastructure, which is critical to several of these projects coming out of the ground. You can read there some of the things that this particular TIF is intended to pay for. Most everything that we're looking at here is going to be the high dollar items. Are those similar to our 54 TIF where the developer themselves puts in the capital upfront and then the TIF income, if it becomes realized through filling up those various entities with retail and office and residential spaces, they can be reimbursed through that. The only significant piece of this that may be a municipal project would be the parking structure. Parking structure is critical downtown to support a third hotel, to support the activities of the upcoming International Bluegrass Music Center and generally the flow of traffic that we expect will be generated by this additional retail, commercial and residential development. One thing that's important to remember is a TIF is not a new tax. It's tax increment financing. This is recapturing of what's new to that area. If we did nothing today, we'd have a base and we'd grow our normal percentage and we'd hope that people would stay and hope that somebody would develop this or that block. But when we are able to utilize those funds, especially that large chunk of that 80 percent that comes from the state sales tax and the other income to help the private sector in these, in a public partner, public-private partnership, to pay for the public infrastructure, that allows some place to go in and to build that at a price point that now they can afford to have a market rate for leasing space rather than having to run, for instance, a new sewer line all the way down Second Street that may be 100 years old in order to be able to host 90 hotel rooms and 50 to 100 residential units. That would be cost prohibitive if they had to do all that public infrastructure without some possibility of reimbursement. We estimate about $66.3 million in combined incremental revenue once the projects, throughout the consistency of this project over the 20-year period, the local participation being 23 million of that and the state participation being about 43 million of that. However, that the qualifying need, what we've determined the public infrastructure that is needed to get these projects up and out of the ground in economically feasible manner, we estimate to be about $47.3 million, which the key to that is, is that we need much less of the total qualifying local and state revenue than is generated, which means the local general fund here will benefit from that difference and the state's coffers will certainly benefit from the difference between that 47.3 million and the estimated 66.3. During the construction period, we estimate about 1,600 jobs in our community at about $237 million of economic impact. But the duration of this TIF is the real key that I think is significant in why the commission should consider moving forward with the TIF. And that's 580 sustained jobs and a $1.2 billion economic impact. And that's pretty significant for Owensboro and it just builds on to what this commission and previous have already done in our downtown. The proposed timeline for this is October 20th being the first reading of the TIF ordinance, very similar to what you had already gone into great detail to digest on the last TIF. November, either the 3rd or 17th, depending on circumstances, the second reading and if it's approved, submitting it around the middle of November to the state TIF application for KEPTA to evaluate it. During that period of time between the 18th of November and the 10th of December, which we would ask that they hear this, the staff here and our consultants Commonwealth Economics will spend a considerable amount of time answering any and all questions that the staff at KEPTA may have for us, which we did on this last go-around. And it was a very beneficial and rewarding partnership with that group. January through April, the independent consultants review. I can tell you on the 54 TIF, that's what's happening right now. The state has employed the consultant and they are starting to work. And we hope to, around May timeframe, the final TIF approval from KEPTA. Subject to any questions of the commission, I ask the mayor to consider opening it up for public comment.
Ed, let me ask you one question now. Again, like 54, if we get preliminary approval on December 10th, then some of these projects can move forward?
That's correct, Mayor. The projects that could move forward are the ones that are dependent upon understanding that they're hoping and they're banking on the reimbursement from this TIF being at some level approved. And we're pretty confident that if there's preliminary approval on the 10th, that A-level of participation from the state will come. And I think the developers will feel very comfortable at that point in time in moving forward with the projects.
With that, unless there's questions by the commission.
I have a question. Would you define A-level? What are, define the levels or the levels?
As far as levels of.
Participation.
Participation. There are significant factors that go into determining whether or not a state participation in a local TIF is warranted. One of the significant issues there is how do we retain as a partnership with the state the money that is leaking out into, over that river, going to Evansville, going to other communities, going to Indianapolis? And I think that there's two aspects of that. This is a little different than 54. 54 is very retail oriented, very commercial base oriented. And this one is significant, not only from the retail and the commercial side of it, but also from the tourism perspective. Drawing those tourism dollars in here, the International Bluegrass Music Center, the convention center, the Third Hotel, there are a number of opportunities for regional and national conventions, meetings and organizations to not choose Evansville as their destination, but come into Kentucky and have that event here, have those dollars spent here and have the Commonwealth and the local economy being supplemented by those tax dollars. So when I talk about level, it's a determination from the consultants to what level they believe, based on the economics of the project, that they can retain money. And that'll be basically net new money to the state and to the city. And from that amount, they'll take and determine what participation level they'll have.
In looking at the documents, Ed, there's a lot of discussion about we meet a 20 percent threshold, if that rings a bell, in our application. Why is that so important? I think, in other words, it's not more than 20 percent, I think, is what the, of our net, I think it's profit tax or property tax?
Oh, the entire net value of the, of the whole, the value of all the property in the whole city of Owensboro and as compared to this 300-plus acres, there is a ratio. What they don't want is a community that puts a, that has, let's just say it's a billion dollars of value of land, but 80 percent of that is concentrated in six square blocks of their downtown. That's not the type of geographic location that meets the criteria and eligibility for a TIF. What they want to see is exactly what we have downtown. If you look at this entire area and the various places that are either abandoned, underutilized, vacant, or have no, have not been filled in with any property or any buildings, and then the deteriorating condition of the residential units, all of that put together and the values of that property have a threshold they can't exceed, and we're well under that threshold, not only for here, but in combination with the 54 TIF, it seems a perfect match for the criteria of this legislation.
Anyone else? With that, I will open it up for public comment. There being none, I'll close the public comment period and I guess we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed. Good job. You ought to be becoming a state expert on tips.
Well, we have good consultants, Mayor, that have helped educate all of us.
Okay, good deal. Commissioners, for some time, I have been talking to Mr. Steve Casslin. Where is Steve?
He just stepped out to take a call.
About the need for a dog park in our city. And I've got to tell you that Mr. Casslin is to be commended for taking this on, pretty much not asking much from the city, but I asked the staff, Mr. Parrish, Amanda, to take a look at this, working with Steve to see what it would take to create a dog park in the city of Owensboro. I think we have a lot of dog owners in this city and two of them are up here on the dais because they have their little creatures with them. But with that, I will turn this over to Amanda and Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the potential for a dog park or an off-leash area with you all today. So let's start by clearly defining what that off-leash area dog park is. It's basically a contained public area where owners, our citizens, can bring their pet to recreate with that pet off-leash. Very simple. That concept and what that can look like, it can be hundreds of different visual components. But basically what we are going to present to you today is the potential for a 10-acre area on a piece of property that we currently own and utilizing that space that is currently minimal use for a larger recreational purpose. The most common misconception about a dog park is that it's for dogs. It's clearly for our citizens. It's a way for citizens to get out that have a common interest, no different than a playground or a ball field to recreate, to commune with nature. It promotes health in our community, which is very, very important to us as a staff. And it's just another way to provide a public space for interaction for our, for our community. There's lots of proven health benefits to companion pet ownership and some of those things are reducing cholesterol, lowering blood pressure, regulating one's mood. So all those things speak highly when we look at promoting health in the recreational portion of our community. Here's some pictures. Maybe not. Can you help me, Beth? There we go. Let's try this again. Should be simple. There we go. Okay. Here's some pictures of some different areas. You can see at the bottom, there's some ladies on a bench. They're all there recreating, socializing with their pets. But there's a lot of different looks for a dog park. And as the mayor mentioned, we got here because an engaged citizen, Steve Casslin, brought this to our attention. And he's here today with some other, with another member of the Dog Park Committee. And what I believe he asked for you, Mayor, is just basically your permission to review the idea of a dog park for our community, what that may look like, what our citizens would perceive would be needed within the community. And he's done a great job with that. He's got lots of citizens involved. They have a Facebook page that has over 2,000 likes, so you can see that there's some support for this momentum in our community. And when they got me involved, I sat down with them on more than one occasion to discuss the idea. And I wasn't initially sold. I'm all about growing the parks and recreation amenities in our community, but as a staff, I felt like I needed to pursue why it would be important. So the first thing I did is pull our long-range plan or the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And that was updated back in January of 2011. And at that time, through surveys that were done as part of this, with, through the consulting firm as part of this master plan, there was astounding support for a dog park. You can see that on the facility needs assessment for our park system here in Owensboro and in Davis County, number seven on that list was an off-leash area. So at that point, I started reviewing National Recreation and Parks Society standards and I saw that per every 50,000 residents in a community nationally, now the standard is one dog park. Also, I did some review of how many dog owners might be in our community. So per, some Per-Humane Society numbers, they state that 40 percent of Americans in the U.S. have owned dogs. So when I started thinking, how do I equate that to the number of people that play ball in our community and use those parks facilities or that use our walking trails, I felt like 40 percent was a very strong number. Now, when you look at the potential site for a dog park, we looked at several currently city-owned properties to reduce the cost in for initial cost, for the initial cost of construction for this area. And the area that the group supports and that I support would be utilizing currently unused property at Yule's Heritage Park. If you look at this map, running north-south, the green line running north-south is the Green Belt along Byers Avenue. The top of that page would be 54. Running east-west is the Green Belt. Now, on the outside of the bypass there, the furthest kind of pink color to the far right, that is Yule's Heritage Park. Many people may not realize that that pink property to the left of the bypass there on your map is also Yule's Heritage Park. Currently, that is open green space. It's not utilized for much of anything. So this location seems like a viable option. It's highly visible from the bypass. It's currently part of an existing park, so we already have some maintenance costs. So there'd be an increase, but it wouldn't be significant. There's no upfront purchase to property, which is nice. And there's some natural barriers. So one of the drawbacks that I'm contemplating we may hear from people that might be against the dog park is potential noise. So when you look at this area, it is to the rear of the Heartland subdivision and there are some adjoining property owners. But they're on the other side of Horse Fort Creek. There's a natural berm tree line there. You also already have the noise from the bypass. So when you stand on that property, it's a nice, big, beautiful area, but there's noise from the bypass. So if there is any perceived concern that noise is going to be a problem for a dog park, this, these natural berms and those other noises that are currently consistent at that location might help fight that, that concern. Also, with it being in a park, you already have accessibility to parking in Yule's Heritage Park, which is a significant cost upfront for infrastructure. And you also have the accessibility through the pathway. Now, the accessibility for the pathway is one significant reason that I like this location. And that's because my perception is many people that would utilize a dog park would walk to that location if possible. So when you look at this next map that I pulled up, going east to west there, you have the Green Belt. And the colored locations are different neighborhoods and subdivisions that are easily walkable. The red stars are a mile and a half from center, from the point at which we would propose a dog park to be located. And you have about 2,500 households, which on our current census data is three person, three people per household. So that's about 8,400 residents that you would reach at that location, just within a quick walk.
So that dog park, back up, Amanda, that dog park is just west of that bypass, right?
Yes, yes, sir. In that, you can see the tan and the pink neighborhood at the south side of the Green Belt there, being that white area to the left underneath the blue, which is the Heartlands.
Got you. Yeah, I see it.
So what we're looking at could be, as I mentioned before, hundreds, it could be done 100 different ways, Mayor. Basically, what the group is looking to is they want to propose that they would raise the funds for a significant portion of this project. And to do that minimally going in, we would look for fencing, water, shade, seating, trash cans, signage, all the minimal cost. And those minimal costs would be about $119,000. When you look at the amenities that are stated in some of these pictures, you can see based upon the funds that could be raised, there's hundreds of things that we could do with this location. The top left-hand picture and bottom right-hand picture show some dog agility equipment. You've got water features and some nice shade structures at some locations. So based upon the funding that could be raised, the dog park could, could have some extremely nice amenities. As I mentioned, we're looking at basic amenities in about $119,000. The two significant costs in that are fencing at about $65,000 and water at $43,000 is our estimate on water, Mayor. Also, we have some annual expenses of that location. That would be about $12,000 to maintain that property. But based upon the funds they raise, we could add a lot of amenities at this location. So what I'm asking for, Mayor and Commissioner, is some guidance on where we go for here. What the group would like, what the group would like is to see you all to earmark 10 acres of that property. There's 32 acres. I'll go back to that slide.
That's what I was looking for.
In that large portion to the west of the bypass, that's kind of the arched portion, that's about 32 acres of property. And they're asking for us to earmark 10 acres of that property to designate for them to be able to go out and raise the funds to put a dog park at that location.
Commissioners, just FYI, when Amanda met with me about this and related the expense of the water line, I did this morning call Terry Nolte with OMU to see if OMU would be willing to make a contribution towards this project and put that water line in at no cost to the city or to the Dog Park Committee. He's going to take that to his board and make that request of them. So we'll see how that, see how that goes. But I do hope they step up and participate in this, this project. Amanda, back on the operating costs. Now, I noticed we said $12,000, but at one time I know I was talking to Steve that, you know, that we would charge some type of annual fee for people to utilize this park so that we can ensure that the dogs are, and maybe this is something Steve needs to address, but that they're appropriately licensed and all of that. You want to touch on that?
Well, we have talked about that. I think we kicked around the operational model several times in discussions. What most cities are doing nowadays, Mayor, is free-to-use, no different than most of our parks. So what we have landed on as a group is propose a free-to-use location, no different than Legion, Moreland or others. When we looked at what Bowling Green and Louisville had done at some of their dog parks and their initial models going in to have that membership style fee, many of those locations started one way, thinking that it would be worth it. But in the long run, they found out it was more of a headache to manage the memberships for what little revenue that was generated from that.
All right. So basically, what we're suggesting here, the city would basically donate the land or designate the land to be utilized as a off-leash park. And there would be the water line, which I talked to OMU about that. And then the remainder of the cost would be raised by the Dog Park Committee?
Yes, sir.
That's good. Because I tell you, in so many cases, things have happened in this community because of partnerships. And this looks like this is going to be another case of, an example of a good, good partnership. Steve, first of all, I want to commend you for your persistence here, for your work on this. I know you've done a tremendous amount of work. Thank you. And I for one, support moving forward with this. It doesn't look like it's going to take a whole lot on the part of the city of Owensboro to implement this. And I think it's a great amenity for our community to have, have a dog park. And I suspect there's, most of the cities our size already have one of these. So again, like so many things in our community, we seem to be playing a little bit of catch-up. But Amanda, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just want to thank Steve for all of his work. He's been a great partner on this park.
Yes. Commissioners, I'll ask every one of you up here to give your opinion on what you think of this. I'll start over here. Commissioner Glenn?
I think, I've heard from a lot of constituents over the years knocking on the number of doors, why don't we have a dog park? So I've certainly, and in theory and concept, I think it's a good idea. I own a dog too. So, but I would say, the only question I have is the fence size in the pictures anyway. And I know we're probably just taking that online, what was available. But you've got some pretty big dogs. And I'm wondering about, you know, when we design it, what the, will we, who will we hire to design it or do we need a design firm?
I don't think this is a project in which we would need a design. I think we can look at what other communities have done and emulate something that they have prepared. The American Kennel Association suggests a five-foot fence minimal. And in some areas, like the quote-unquote what I call the foyer area, the entry area where you bring your dog in, it's double gated and you take your dog off the leash. In some cases, they recommend six foot of that area and the perimeter would be six foot. So we have some options, but I would say no less than five foot.
But I'd, that's important.
Commissioner Nunley?
Well, I want to thank Steve for the, for the doggy. He's actually, this is actually an owner of one of the dog houses that Steve just saw. So, you know, I knew that there was. So, you know, I, I knew that there were a lot of dogs in Owensboro, but I really didn't realize it until I started campaigning and going to the houses. I, I would guess probably 80% of people, would you, would you guys agree? Yeah. I mean, they're every, they're, they're, they always run to the door. I think this is particularly important because not, and not in all neighborhoods do we have sidewalks where you can walk your dogs. It's a very healthy environment, not only for the dogs, but for the, the owners of the dogs. So I think having a, a dog park where not only the dogs, but the owners can get out and exercise and breathe in fresh air and, and enjoy the natural beauty of this community is really, really important. I did have one question, though, and this might be more of a management-type question, but I know when you take your dogs to PetSmart or whatever, they ask for proof of vaccination. How, how are we going to monitor that?
I don't know that there would be a way to monitor that unless we did a membership style. And most communities, as I mentioned nowadays, are not doing memberships. When you have a membership, to get that membership, you require someone brings in their vaccination record, and if the dogs are required to be licensed in that county, such as they are here in Davis County, then you would bring that information to get your membership. However, from what Berea, Bowling Green, Paducah, what they're doing, none of those areas are looking at making their model that way or no longer doing it in that manner. So like in many parks and in many situations, we post rules and regulations and we, we encourage people, no different than the skate park, we encourage you to follow the rules, we post the rules, and then we leave it at your own discretion.
But we, that, you know, I'm always thinking about the legal piece, but that wouldn't be liability on our part if people come in aware that the dogs in there may or may not be, have rabies vaccine.
I will tell you, Steve and I have had conversations similar to this, but I don't want to speak for him, so I think I would feel more comfortable letting Ed answer that question. Put Ed on the spot.
Sure.
Sure.
I, I think the way that we sign the various parks and the educational pieces that we can put on, for instance, Channel 75, I'm not concerned about a liability issue with the dog park from the issue of, of a rabies or anything like that. However, I do think that, as our loss control folks at KLC would, would also emulate, that as this progresses, that we have regular spot checks on behavior, rules, the way things are managed out there, and give a very clear indication of how someone can contact the Parks Department in the event that there's a particular dog that may be problematic. It's a curse of any dog park that you get the one bully dog that goes out there and ruins it for the whole group. So I think it's manageable, and I'm not concerned about the risk issue.
That's great.
Let me ask you, Amanda or Steve, whichever one, I, you know, I assume, of course, the Parks Department's going to be involved in overseeing this and managing this, but is it in our intent that we would have some type of dog park committee that would work with our staff
Yes, I think so.
On an annual basis? Is that?
We, we've discussed that. I'd like to keep this group on as kind of an advisory board for this group, and they could help, as they would be primary users for this location, then they would be eyes and ears on the ground for us in that line of direct communication to give us support and guidance and planning for the future.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
Well, somebody's got to ask it. Who's cleaning up all this stuff? I'm, no, really, I'm just, I mean, is that something that, that, that the city would, would do? I mean, I, we've got those little bags down here at Smothers Park that people are supposed to get and whatever, but I don't know how many people do that, so I'm just...
We would ask the general public and sign it as such, that they clean up after their own pet, no different than someone that brings their pets now to use a walking trail in a park, but we would have a sanitation crew that would go out, as we do in most of our parks, and pick up trash at least twice a week, and it would be part of their duty to take care of that.
I think it's a great idea.
And Amanda, it's my understanding that we're going to rotate through the park, is, I mean, we use it for a period and then we go to another area? Is that something like that?
Yes. What we would propose is three, what I would call oversized dog runs that have adjoining fences in the middle. One of those dog runs would be, would be split in half, did a little over three acres apiece for small dogs, and the only dogs that should utilize that areas would be owners with smaller pets, and we put a pound weight limit to that. It might be 25, 30 pounds. And then the other two runs would be for large dogs, and you would rotate that. You would use an area based upon turf conditions for sometime between four and eight weeks and weather conditions outside, and you'd swap back and forth, and that'd help maintain the turf for a longer period.
Good. Commissioner?
Just a couple of comments. I've been sitting up here for, going on six years, and for five, people have been on me about this, especially Tom over at TD's. I know he's been on me for a while. I don't know if he works with you guys or not, but...
I believe Tom's wife is in the group on the dog park.
Yeah, it's Tom, she's in, she's in the group?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, the thing I like about it is you guys are putting skin in the game, you're raising your own money, and that's very important. And I told them a long time ago, I said, "Just keep on keeping on and stay with it, and eventually happen." It looks like it, it's going to. So as Commissioner Nelly says, as you go out and campaign, you knock on lots of doors, you'll see most people that I run into do have dogs in Owensboro, so I think it'll be utilized. So thank you, Steve, for heading that up.
You know, I, I think back over the many projects that we've done, one that comes to mind, of course, is the tennis facility and the ice. There's just so many that have come about because of the persistence of our citizens and the involvement of our citizens in making these things happen. And again, I, I can't commend you enough, Steve, for your involvement here, your willingness, your persistence to make this, make this happen. Commissioners, if there's no other questions, I would ask if there's a consensus up here to move forward with creating this, and of course, staff will bring us back the appropriate issues for us to approve. All right. It looks like Bill, Mr. Parrish, you got your marching orders. Amanda, Steve, again, thank you all very much. It looks like we're moving this project forward. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next thing is our city project list, and as always, we will deal with this on an exception basis. Looks like we've got a lot, lot going on. Making progress on Gabe's Tower, that's good. Any questions of the staff on any of this? Run. Everybody's familiar with most of them.
Well, I think it'd be good to get into, Gabe's Tower, I mean, we, there was some movement on that and the photos, so are we still making progress? Are they still working four days a week?
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.
Second, I'll just do voice on this. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, and in 10 minutes, we have our tax hearing.